City workshop is called to order. Clerk can please call the roll.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Burbank?
Present.
Commissioner Colwell?
Here.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
Here.
Commissioner McCool?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Here.
And Mayor Avila?
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we're going to go to our first agenda item, which is Section A, which is Discussion Regarding Deltona City Commission Operating Guidelines and Meeting Rules and Procedures. Would anybody like to start?
Mr. Chisholm?
Mr. Chisholm?
Yes, sir. Section 1, the Operating Guidelines for Effective Commission Operations, and you see the policy of the City Commission, the role is defined in the first two paragraphs, the first four paragraphs. And it talks about the effectiveness of that and the two paragraphs explaining that, in addition, the commission mayor role describes the mayor, the mayor will be the official spokesperson for the City Commission without limiting other than City Commission members' ability to speak on issues. Communications, there's six paragraphs on communications, and it describes the relevance of information provided as policy, including pros and cons, effectiveness, professional recommendations from the city staff, and to the City Commission for their final authority. Achieving trust of the City Commission and City administration between the commission members themselves should be fundamental. Open, regular communications will be used to ensure that both the City Commission and the City administration are informed so that neither is surprised or blindsided on issues or questions. The city manager will issue, will ensure that the City Commission is informed about issues that have impacted on a major policy area, may attract media or public attention or affect major stakeholders. Five is the City Commission may pass along information or request information directly from staff after informing the city manager without directing staff, except for records relating directly to upcoming noticed agenda items. Requests for records by individual members of the City Commission shall be handled in accordance with the Florida law and the City of Deltona Public Records policies applicable to the public at large. Six is the City Commission will annually review progress on its collective leadership goals and priorities and operating guidelines to ensure success relevance. Now, I've gone through, most of it, I haven't got to the charter officers. I just, if you have any questions in that first section, first two sections, I'd be happy to help talk about it.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Okay. If you go to the next, it is the Charter Officer's Performance Accountability. The charter officers will be evaluated on the accomplishment of the City Commission's stated goals. There shall be an annual evaluation of the charter officers during the month of July and procedures determined by the City Commission. The City Commission will never give instructions to persons who report to the charter officers. The City Commission will hold the charter officers accountable for staff performance and individually provide the city manager with feedback about staff performance in a private setting. Priorities of the charter officers will be defined by the City Commission, goals and priorities in support of the vision. Any questions?
Commissioner Burbank, and then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one, evaluate on the accomplishment of the City Commission's stated goals. I was not aware that we had stated goals. I'm new here, but maybe I just have not been informed.
It's typical to do that annually. You establish your goals for your year, upcoming year, and that's something we would do here in the next month or so. And it also is a part of what you adopt in your budget. Your budget should indicate the goals that have been approved by the City Commission, and that's how your budget is derived.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
And that was going to be part of my next question for you, Mr. Chisholm, is since a majority of this commission was not around when we actually did our priorities and our strategic plan, have they all been given a copy of that?
You know, I don't recall.
Okay.
Because we all kind of came at the same time, and a number of things were going on, but I can sure make all of that information available.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Chisholm?
Section 2, Meetings. Meetings of the City Commission shall be held at City Hall, in the City Commission Chambers or Conference Room, or at such other location in the city as designated by the City Commission or designee. All meetings shall be, public meetings, with the exception of executive sessions, which shall be closed to the public in accordance of Florida statutes and shall be subject to notice and other requirements of law applicable to the public meetings. Whenever the commission meets as a body for the purpose of a meeting at any city facility or within the city limits, a law enforcement officer shall be present. In addition, whenever the City Commission meets as a body for the purpose of a meeting in the city chambers, this meeting shall be televised live. To ensure the integrity of the public meetings process, an open government commissioner shall be prohibited from accepting or sending any electronic communications via cellphone or other device during the course of a City Commission meeting. Electronic research is permitted. Commissioners may submit in writing their comments and position and information to the city manager prior to the meeting in which they are expected to be absent so that it can be shared with the entire City Commission, Resolution Number 2015-49. Members of the commission are also prohibited from participating in any meetings of the City Commission by telephone, electronic processes.
Mr. Mayor?
Members are required to be physically present in order to participate in the meeting of the City Commission.
I'd like to speak, please. I can't get on.
Mr. Chisholm, give me, the clerk, please. Commissioner McCool's having an issue with her.
I would like to speak on that, please. Okay, thank you. I would like to bring up something on 5, please. So, we were, I do not believe that, I do not believe that that is the most current resolution, 2010-42. This year, we made it so that you could join electronically in case of sickness of a family member, if you had to be out of town. The only thing that was required was a quorum here to vote. You could vote on a matter, and if you were excused by the commission, you could be present electronically, so I would like that researched and stricken, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool, and I see Vice Mayor Bradford is on the board as well.
And I believe that is farther down in this, when I read it, where it does state that if an individual is absent and it goes into, so it's almost duplicated, it starts talking about, trying to find where it was in here, we'll probably get to it, but you'll see in there where it's, like she was referencing, if somebody is ill, we're allowed to do it as long as this person does not make it a quorum, then we're allowed to come in. So I think that does need to be revised. We'll probably get to that section. Also, where it talks about the last paragraph, members of the commission are prohibited from participating in any meeting of the City Commission by telephone, or not. No, electronic research, I'm sorry, the paragraph ahead, it says electronic research is permitted. We also were given in the back box, and I don't know if everybody knew up here is aware of it, these. So there's two up here for commissioners, if they had to have any research done, that they're able to just grab and do research on.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if you were aware of that.
No, I wasn't.
It's in Section 5, if you go forward, is where the illness section is in, under quorum. Section 5, it says, "A commissioner may join a meeting for good cause shown, such as illness of the commissioner or their family or an emergency situation. The commissioner participating by Zoom or similar platform may not be used to constitute a quorum."
Yeah, so that last section just needs to be stricken, that resolution needs to be stricken and replaced with the, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Burbank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to, a quick question for Commissioner Bradford. When you say those are available for doing research?
I'm not, what kind of research? I mean, is it just Google, or?
Well, yeah, so if you, there's certain things on there. So if you were doing a meeting and you want to look something up in stats, and like we've done it before, like, oh, I want to see what this taxes were, whatever, you can do a Google search and look something up. So you're not like, because when you start picking up your phone and doing research, when people are like, oh, my God, they're texting. So, so not to confuse people to think that we're texting instead of doing research, they provided those to us so that if we had something we wanted to look up, we were able to look it up.
Okay, solid, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, and I also have a question on that. Chisholm, if any of us up here have, for example, I'll use my situation, my wife is pregnant, she's not having a great pregnancy, right? We're allowed to have our cellphones here in case of an emergency. We could step out and answer those calls, because I know mine is set up where she can bypass any silent alarms or whatever. Is that okay? Is that, that's not an issue, correct?
What? You didn't step out?
Yeah, I don't see that as any problem with these rules.
No, that's not the intent of what this is about.
Okay.
The intent of this is, so there's no communications between you or others during the meeting by electronic devices, but if you have an emergency, or your wife, or family, or, it could be any one of a number of things. I don't think there's anything that prohibits that. That's not the intent. The intent is to keep the meeting open to the public while we're in the meeting process.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chisholm. You can please continue.
Okay. A, regular meetings, the City Commission shall meet twice monthly. Meetings shall be held on the first and third Monday of each month unless otherwise rescheduled due to a holiday or lack of city business. Two is regular meeting of the City Commission shall begin at 6:30 and conclude at 10:30 PM. If a regular scheduled meeting falls on a legal holiday, then the subsequent Monday or date designated by the City Commission shall be deemed as a regular scheduled meeting date. Four, written minutes shall be kept of all meetings, regular meetings. Actually, it's all meetings. Any questions about that?
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
I don't have a question, but I think that as we're reading this, because we have new elected officials, those of us who've been here before should add to these comments. So it says here that meetings conclude at 10:30, but we know better than that. So after 10:30, we have to have a motion made to continue for whatever time we think, whatever time we think the meeting might end. So we have to have a motion to extend to 11:00 or 11:30, so going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Avila Vasquez. Mr. Chisholm, please continue.
Okay, special meetings. A special meeting may be called by the mayor, or in his or her absence, the vice mayor. Special meetings may be called upon the request of a majority of the City Commission, that's Charter Section 8C. Meetings shall preferably be in the afternoon or evening hours of weekdays or on Saturdays as necessary. Two, the city clerk shall provide no less than 12 hours prior notice of a meeting to the public where practical, that's Charter Section 8C. Three, action of the City Commission in a special meeting shall be limited to the purpose for which the special meeting is called. Four, written minutes shall be kept of all special meetings. Okay. Workshop meetings, C. Workshop meetings may be scheduled during the regular meeting or called in the same manner as a special meeting and shall be for discussion only, with the exception in two below. The meeting times shall preferably be in the afternoon or evening hours of weekdays or on Saturdays as necessary. Workshop meetings will not exceed two hours. Two, no official action shall be taken in a workshop meeting except to recommend items to be considered at a regular meeting or special meeting, or to give direction to the city attorney or city manager. Minutes shall be kept of all workshop meetings but shall not require approval by the City Commission. Time permitted, public comment shall be permitted at the end of agenda items only and shall not exceed two minutes per person.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Commissioner Colwell, you have a question?
Yes, I do, about the special meetings. Is there any way in Section 1 that we can define what the meetings are called for, like the content, whether it's precedent, needs immediate attention, or it can wait till the next meeting?
You know, there, a special meeting is, I guess we could define that better as, I think that's what you're asking. We can do that, and kind of establish some parameters for that, if that's what you'd like.
Yes.
It's normally an unusual occurrence, something that has a time, time may be a factor, or there may be an incident that occurred that needs action. You know, it's usually time connected. So we'll look and see if we can give you some ideas of different ways that we might be able to kind of define what that special meeting is.
To Commissioner Colwell's point, Mr. Chisholm, I think that's a, it's a good idea to get a good definition, right? That way, we can differentiate the difference between an emergency meeting, because I know that's coming up here in Section E, and a special meeting. I know we had a meeting, a special one or an emergency one, I don't even know which one it was, but if we can get better definition on those two, then we can be a little bit more understanding on what needs to be prioritized or not.
Okay.
Commissioner Jody Lee, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, if there could be, there's something in there about a special meeting being called. I mean, if it's an emergency, I get it, but if it's not a non-emergency, if it can't be, something about, I mean, the whole, if it can be handled at the next regular scheduled meeting?
Right.
I mean, not just because we want to be here an extra time.
Absolutely. I think you all have pretty much defined it for me.
Time certain, correct? That's it, really, time certain.
Time certain, right.
Continue, Mr. Chisholm. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearings. One, the city clerk shall advertise all public hearings as required by law. Two, the purpose of the public hearing is to determine support, objections, or suggestions from the public on two proposals, and to determine if a proposed ordinance or resolution requires changes or adoption. Three, time of public hearings. Public hearings shall be held during the regular meetings of the City Commission as placed on the agenda. B, the City Commission may set a specific time during which, during any meeting, or C, a special meeting may be called for the specific purpose of a public hearing. That gets back to meetings a little bit, so we'll take a look at this section, too, and see if we can kind of clean that up. Any questions about it?
There's no questions on the board.
Okay. E, state of emergency meetings in attendance. Should a state of emergency be called by the federal, state, county, or city applicable to the City of Deltona? Then, and in that event, the city may applicably be to, and consistent with, the state emergency. A little tongue-tied there. Made applicable to and consistent with state emergency. One, limited commission meetings, one per month. I guess they're speaking of emergencies, or? Okay. Two, conduct commission meetings whereby commissioners may attend telephonically or virtually, and I think that's what you were talking about a while ago. So it says we can conduct them, but that'd be state of emergency meetings, so we might change some of that language up in the front so that you have that option in other areas, too. Allow commissioners to participate in the meeting and to vote telephonically and virtually if the commissioner's absence is attributable to the state of emergency. In all cases, the public's access to and ability to participate shall be maintained to the maximum extent possible. Section 2, effective date, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon the final adoption by the City Commission.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. We have a question by Vice Mayor Bradford, and then I'll call on Commissioner McCool.
One of the questions I have on E1, limit commission meetings to one per month. If we're under a city, state, federal, county, that's not something I want to limit to once a month.
It doesn't work, you're right.
Right. So one should be stricken. I mean, that may be great for something else, but when we're coming under a state of emergency, just?
I think you need to strike that out.
Yeah, I say we strike that, if everybody's in agreeance with that.
Yep.
Yep, maybe you should read as necessary.
And I believe when we changed this, we changed it due to COVID protocols, and we were not able to meet in person, that's why we were allowing under emergency to meet virtually on this one because of the state of emergency. So that was specifically done during COVID, just as a?
Okay, do you want us to open it up in the other section here for that same, not necessarily because of emergency, but because they're unavailable to attend?
I believe there's still another area in here where it goes into in-depth about having those meetings telegraphed or telephone. Maybe you can call in, like if somebody's on vacation, allows that, but definitely E1, I'd like to have stricken.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool, and then Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
Thank you. I would like to point out that 2 and 3 are in direct conflict with one another. Number 2 states that conduct commission meetings whereby commissioners may attend telephonically or virtually. Number 3, however, puts a caveat in there, and I would say that one supersedes the other, not the same, if, I don't know, legally, because if we're agreeing that commissioners, because of any other emergency, can participate and vote telephonically, I just believe it's redundancy to, if it's, is attributable to the state emergency, so I would strike that.
Strike 3.
Number 3, strike 3 as well.
Anything else, Commissioner McCool?
I would also question number 4. In all cases, the public's access to and ability to participate shall be maintained to the maximum extent possible, to include electronic, being able to Zoom in, right? What I mean is the public being able to Zoom in. If we're limited by emergency, so are they, so if we have a Zoom meeting during a state of emergency, that the public also have access to that. But I want it specifically mentioned as far as electronically, because we had a situation before where members of the public were kind of locked outside from a meeting, and I do not want duplication of that. So if we can address number 4, to include the public having access electronically pointedly, so that would be good.
Let us look at that a little bit, and it's a good idea, we just got to make sure we catch it right.
Sure.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know my first question was already brought up by Vice Mayor, which was, the reason that the Zoom meetings came up was because of COVID. And I know after that, there was a big discussion as to what exactly is an emergency for somebody to Zoom in on a meeting. I don't remember if, when you Zoom in, do you make a quorum? I know we weren't taking a vote from the Zoom meetings, right?
Can I speak? Are you okay with me talking on that?
Yeah.
So, under the state of emergency, this is different than the regular emergency.
Right, I'm not talking about the state of emergency. I know that sometimes we took it a little further, so if we, for example, had to go away and could not be at a meeting, we were, we would call it in, and Lee will, you know, hook us up that we can participate in the meeting, but it wasn't an emergency meeting, it's just that we couldn't be present at the meeting, which at one time, there was a little discussion, because some commissioners felt that if you can't make the meeting, you shouldn't be Zooming, right? But if you are Zooming, I don't know, was it, did we make a quorum, or we were not part of that quorum?
I believe, Madam Commissioner, that it was, the physical quorum had to be here, right here, but you were allowed to vote in any businesses.
So if we're not making the quorum, how could we vote?
So if I can't, Marsha, can you please elaborate on that, since you're legal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you need to have physical presence of the quorum, and so that means the people in attendance can vote on an item. But what was being allowed was additional members who couldn't come in to participate by Zoom, but you could not vote.
By Zoom, you can't vote by Zoom? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Under Section 5 quorum, it outlines exactly what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Yes, so under Section 5, so it basically, if we want to wait till we get to that, but it goes in and it discusses that we can Zoom in, but there has to be a physical quorum here. We can vote, but there has to be physical quorum here. So it is in here, so whatever references in the other meetings, we want to reference them all to be the same.
Okay, well, I'll bring my question up when we get to that section. The other thing is the comment about having the public Zoom in, I think that was a problem, because Lee would have to set everyone in to our, you know, our systems to Zoom in, but I think we were receiving emails prior to the meetings or during meetings, you know, the ladies there would receive emails that we were, we would have to answer from the dais.
Do you want?
As I indicated a few minutes ago, I think, I think we need to look at that and study a little bit, how that would happen. I want to be sure that we, to ensure the effectiveness of the meetings, too.
Correct, because if I, when I participate in Zoom meetings with other organizations, you know, they have to give me access. I just can't log in and be part of the meeting, so, and I know we were having problems here with the IT department doing, you know, with so many residents.
We were pretty primitive when some of this stuff was coming down with COVID, and I think that this city manager is correct, I think we may be a little bit more forward thinking in how some of these pieces work, that we can talk to the IT and PIO, and I think we should be able to do better than we did in the past.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCool?
Yeah, and I just want to say, like, as a city of 100,000, and we're technically advanced, right, as a species, I want to tell you that I know for a fact that there are meetings held, there are 12-step meetings held where thousands of people, hundreds of people are on a meeting, so I know that it can be done, and I'm just trying to keep it transparent, right, because we did have that issue before with people wanting to attend but not being able to for whatever reason. So moving forward, I just think that our IT department is smart enough to figure that out, and legally, I understand what you're talking about legally also, but I'm just saying it's done all the time.
So can I get the city clerk really quick to try to help Commissioner McCool get with her, the button's not working on her. The button's not working on her, on her thing.
Also, you know, if we can reach out, so I know the city of Orlando did something very similar. They were actually, they had people set up in their conventions area, and they were zooming in from one station, and that's how they were doing their public comment. That could be something where we could possibly reach out to our neighboring cities to see what practices that they have in place. I think it's a great idea. Doesn't hurt us to kind of piggyback off what our neighbors are doing. And then Commissioner Burbank, you had a comment or a question?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Chisholm, please continue.
Matter of addressing the commission is section four. City commission shall follow content neutral time, place, and manner of regulations to control disruption while insisting on decorum and allowing the city commission to conduct city business. Civility arises from a sense of shared enterprise. To that end, the Deltona City Commission shall continue to embrace dissension as a civic right and work to create a climate where the public feels included and respected. A, citizen comments may be made on items not on the agenda only during the time designated by the city commission, otherwise citizens may address the city commission only on items under discussion. After the meeting is in session, no person may approach the dais without going to the microphone and asking to be recognized. The mayor will rule as to whether the person will be allowed to speak. B, citizen comments may be made on items not on the agenda during the time designated by the city commission, otherwise citizens may address the city commission only on items under discussion. C, citizen comments may be made on consent agenda items during the time designated by the city commission, otherwise citizens may address the city commission only on items under discussion during the public forum. Each person addressing the city commission is a D. Each person addressing the city commission has the right to speak for a time period of four minutes with a timer in clear view of the speaker. They shall step to the microphone, give his or her name, and address clearly for the record, and shall be limited to four minutes to address the city commission unless such time is expanded or contracted by the mayor or by the majority of the commission.
Mr. Chisholm, have Vice Mayor Bradford have a question or comment?
Under that section A, do we want to change it? It says after the meeting is in session, no person may, may approach the dais without giving to the microphone. So they technically don't go to the microphone and ask to be recognized. Do we want to update to our current procedures, which is to fill out the...
Fill out a form.
Right. So can we update that to current procedures?
Yes. We need to do that. Okay.
Commissioner Jody Lee has another one.
I know our, nobody wants our meetings to last really long, but sometimes, I know there's another part that you can extend someone's talking time for another two minutes. But at sometimes, I mean, people come up here, they give a whole briefing, and you can give an attorney 40 minutes to give a whole description of something. But we're cutting our, I mean, I understand we don't want to be here all night long, but we're cutting our citizens down to four minutes to talk. I mean, sometimes that's getting a little bit. I know we don't want to be here all night, but I think it's not fair that a person that don't live in our city that wants to build something in our city can talk for an hour, but someone that's been here for 30 years gets four minutes. I mean, I think that's kind of...
I think we, Commissioner Jody Lee, I think we have, Mr. Chisholm, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Don't we have leeway on if, for example, I know last meeting, even though I wasn't here...
An extra two minutes.
An extra two minutes?
I think...
Is that what you were talking about, Commissioner?
We typically do that. Yeah, we typically do that, but I, I'm not sure I've read it into the record here, though.
If anything, at least extend where you can, the mayor can give an extra two, I'd say change that to four, just...
Okay. Well, let's, we'll try to get it in this, this section.
Just saying. Just a fair...
Excuse me.
I believe persons of interest that live nearby that are allowed a different time period. They're not given four minutes. I think, Marcia, what's the time period for persons of interest?
Person of standing.
Or persons of standing, sorry.
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
10 minutes. So persons of standing actually get 10 minutes.
Okay. Well, I've seen many meetings where people that have standing and they don't get 10 minutes, their clock still stops at four. That's all.
And I would also ask that if we are doing that, we redefine person of standing because it is my also belief that it's short sighted to say 300 feet, and we've talked about that during different developments. So I would like for us to at least discuss what standing means. It is not a state regulation. It is a self-held belief and regulation per the city municipality. So I would like for us to talk about that also, who has standing and what that means. Because some of these developments, if you have one way in and you are living at the entrance to that, you have standing because of the traffic going by your house. You might not be 300 feet from the development, but you dad blame sure are, have standing, you're affected by it. So I would like for us to revisit the meaning of standing also. And it would seem to be a very minute thing, but it is not, because I will remind us that when we are in quasi judicial hearings, that we may only seek and hear competent evidence from those with standing. So I think it's short sighted if we don't entertain that, that we hear as much evidence, competent evidence as possible, because we've already said something about having that evidence here in, and decorum. So if we could please revisit that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. Commissioner Burbank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heartily agree with, with what Mr. McCool just said. I think the standing actually extends even further than that. I think that, well, for instance, a traffic study that we look at, it says if you make this big project here, you're going to affect traffic three miles away. I would tend to think that standing, anybody in the city's got standing on any project that comes to the city, no matter how large or how small. What I think we'd be looking for here is a balance between the 10 minutes and the four minutes, somewhere in between that we could all agree upon. At least, I, I view the entire 30 square mi, 15 square miles of my neighborhood.
But I think that when we enter into, when we're talking about quasi judicial evidence, when we talk about quasi judicial evidence, that's, you know what I mean? We're talking about someone with standing. I just want that defined sharply, so, because it is so, it is so laser focused when we talk about that, so...
Let's ask Ron to kind of share with us what standing generally is used currently.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Ron Paradise, City of Deltona, Community Services for the record. Standing is a legal term. I'm not a lawyer. I'm, I don't even play one on TV. But, you know, we have, the courts really decide what is standing, who has standing. We have established a minimum standard for standing, those within a 300-foot radius of the property that were directly noticed by mail. That is the minimum standard for what we consider someone that has standing. I'm kind of getting a nod of approval from the city attorney, you know? Oh, I'm not. All right. Help me out here.
Ron, I think, you know, this, this issue has come up before, and I think we did look at a number of different jurisdictions with regard to standing, and some of them were less, and some of them were more. And I don't know that, that, you know, we can, we can do more, I believe, if the commission wants to.
Yeah, that, that would involve changing the do public notice requirements.
Yes.
Of chapter 75.
Yeah.
But standing is, is a, is used as a legal term to establish the, the right of that individual to participate in that action.
Correct.
So, you know, it, how broad do you want it? And that's, it's to be, you know, somewhat subjective.
I think it is subjective. Yeah, I think it...
It is subjective, but I also...
There is a certain subjectiveness to it, but by the same token, I think that, you know, if you go through the process and make that change in the code, you know, if the city determines, you know, if the majority want to offer more standing, or whatever that footage is for standing, I don't, I mean, I don't think we, I don't see how the city would suffer in the, any end result. I mean, all it is, is that the commission is making a determination to recognize more people in a, you know, a greater area to be able to speak and offer their testimony. I mean, as long as it is done properly and, you know, and we, and a rule state what, what it is, I don't see any real downside to it.
Yeah, the, just, you know, for informational purposes, if hypothetically, if the city were to expand the notice radius beyond 300 feet, you know, the cost of mailing is going to, you know, increase commensurate with that radius increase.
But just again, as long as they are apprised of what the potential effects are and they want, and they feel, you know, that they wish to do it, it's something that they can do.
So Commissioner Jody Lee?
I have to agree with Commissioner McCool that, that standing, like she mentioned, because I know exactly what's development. We had an issue with that in a meeting, the one about a pine ridge. You know, if someone lives at the entrance and they're doing work a quarter mile in the back, but they're, all these trucks and vehicles are running by our house, I mean, they would definitely have standing because everything's affecting their way of life. So I, I think we should look at the expanding it a little bit. I mean, all the people that live on Howland where they're making the four lane, all them people along that, their driveway is affected. I mean, they all had standing, but if they live 300 feet off the road, according to our stand, our rules right now, what they have to say, that it wouldn't have no standing. So I think we really need to look at that and make it a little bit broader.
Listen.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think it may be a broader issue than just standing, to be honest with you. Trying to figure out, maybe some of these, we ought to be looking at those developments. If they, if they're going to impact other properties with their development plan, we should have some control over that impact. And that, we're not talking about testimony or anything like that. We're talking about now the actual configuration of the project and what we would allow somebody to do. We're not going to allow somebody to go through, if we set the policy, you can't go through an existing development without providing, you know, an access without construction activity within the, the development. You know, there's, there's a whole bunch of different things you can look at. It's very hard to define who has standing because it typically could be anybody in the city. It could be. But I, I think that's way too broad and way, in most cases, you know, the, kind of the standard that's been used everywhere I've ever been is like 300, 350 feet or 500 feet. That's kind of the, for the purposes, that's the purpose, the purpose is for the public hearing part of it and the decision process. That doesn't mean you can't consider other things. And, and that's, maybe that's something we need to look at.
One, one other quick thing, Mr. Paradise, if, if people come in and they have impact fees and they get all kinds of tax breaks or deals on impact fees coming here, make them pay for the advertising. Just saying.
All right. We're going to go to Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and then we're going to move on to the next commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is, I just want it looked into, because there is extensive Supreme Courts, or, you know, Florida Supreme Court softening on the issue of standing. I just want us to have a clear, a clear understanding. I think that with the configuration of Deltona, with the challenges that we've had developing certain ARPUDs, the challenges that we talk about because of our major county intersections, I just think that we can do better. Now, what that better is, is going to be up to the commission to decide if they want to spend money on postage. That's going to be the commission's decision on that. And I understand that it creates more work for staff. But again, when we're talking about having to make decisions on evidence, right, we, we talk about having as much evidence as we can to, to make the decision. We've done that with the other stuff in our development, talking about development, whereas we talk about, we must have good competent report from staff, we must have pros and cons. So I think that the standing goes along with that tenet that we're trying to achieve with that measure also. So if we can just have it looked into and then brought back to the commission before we de facto have this document, that would be fantastic. I, I mean, I think everybody's reasonable, but I think that 300 feet is too limiting based on the unique situations that we have in Deltona. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm thinking that, or I believe that what we're going through right now is for regular commission meeting. Am I correct? The time to speak? I think the standing time to speak issue should be another subject, should be something put when we're discussing a development, that these people who are coming to speak get extra minutes or, or special privileges on that agenda. I think that what we're discussing right now is regular commission meetings. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So when we have something up for development, then probably that's when the exception should be made of time.
Quasi judicial hearing.
It's kind of what I was alluding to.
Right.
I think there's another way to look at it and achieve really your goals at the same point, but...
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chisholm, that is, could we probably put that under ordinances? Because that's what, development falls under ordinances, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. It would be an ordinance.
Maybe we should add that to that section instead. That way we can have a clear definition between the standing of somebody speaking versus a regular resident that doesn't have standing speaking on something else.
There's, there's legal issues with all those things, and that's the reason why I'm being a little cautious about it.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I know you said we were going to continue, but I have a question on number four as well, which we need clarification. So it says here, they shall step to the microphone, give his or her name and address. We have been attacked for this many times. They're telling us that they're not supposed to or not, don't have to give an address when they come to speak. I know that we, we are asking for an address for the records. Can you clarify for that, clarify that for us, attorney? Sorry.
You all can ask for an address? The problem is when you have individuals that don't wish to give you an address or just want to say resident of Deltona or something like that, you know, how far do you want to go in that kind of scenario? And I think that's why everybody's been pretty lax, because certain people won't answer. So then are you going to tell them to go sit down? Because they won't give you their address. And, and I'm not looking at this from a constitutional standpoint, because again, you're asking for some method of identification is basically what this is about. And, you know, you could ask them, and then if, from my perspective, if they give their name, they don't want to give their address, I would leave it alone. I mean, I, you know, because again, are you going to argue with them, fight with them? I mean, there's no point in it. And if there is a need to get in touch with them or find out who that individual is, I'm sure we can. So that's kind of how I look at it. It's like you want some way to identify them in case somebody has another question or says, who is the one who asked that question or whatever? And we have at least a name. But beyond that, I, you know, I really question trying to get any more information than that.
Commissioner... Forms. Yeah, the forms they fill out, they have name, address, phone number. If they're not filling it out, I mean, I'm saying, the forms, they're supposed to have name, address, and everything else on it too, so...
Yeah, but I don't know that they, although, that they always have all of that.
That they always have all of that filled out.
They don't. Some of them will give you a little information, but not everybody does.
Mr. Chisholm?
I, I understand the, the issue is, is having an idea that the person who's making a presentation has a vested interest in the, in the subject matter and is from the community that, that we represent. But at the same time, you can take in consideration their, you know, their, their comments at the same time, what you're making your... the same time, while you're making your decision. So I, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, but I'd certainly leave it on the forms and ask for it. Whether we get it is, I'm kind of like the attorney, I, I think we're looking for a fight with some people, and I don't think it's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm, please continue.
Okay. Item E, I believe, is where we're at. No person other than a member of the city commission and a person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into discussion either directly or through a member of the city commission without the permission of the mayor. F. Any person who addresses the city commission and makes personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the city commission's staff or general public that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city commission meeting and the conducting of city business shall, at the direction of the, of the mayor or a majority of the city commission, be barred from further participation, from further audience, barred from further audience before the city commission during that meeting. Any person who engages in disorderly conduct or utters loud, threatening, offensive, or abusive language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a city commission meeting and, and the conducting of city business shall, at the discretion of the mayor or majority of the city commission, be barred from further audience before the city commission. Did I read that twice? Nope. H. Pursuant to Florida Statute Sections 790.16, Para 12A, 67, no one may carry a concealed weapon, firearm, or handgun, electronic weapon, tear gas, gun, knife, or billy into a city commission meeting. This prohibition applies to those persons with concealed weapons permit and all elected officials.
Mr. Chisholm, we have a question from Commissioner McCool.
Thank you. I want to go back to F and G as it is, we all know, prob, I'm sorry. I want to talk about F and G here, as we all know, that, that is the thing that we have problems with. It's the elephant in the room, and I want to talk about that. And I want to talk about the fact that over a few years, this commission has been subject to all of these things here, personal, profane, disrupting, mostly disrupting, because one man's cuss word is another man's vernacular. So I find it the disrupting thing here, whereas we're running off other members of the audience, where other members feel that they cannot come because of the, because of what's going on. And I want to understand, I understand, I understand this, I understand our need for balance here, but I want to understand what that means. Tell me, at the discretion of the mayor, or I understand a majority of the city commission, I need to understand how that's going to be enforced, because we get threats of 1A violations on this, and I understand that there's also new case law regarding this. And the city can set the policy of decorum here without trampling First Amendment rights. If we set decorum against disruption, but encourage participation, then we've done our due diligence here. And as far as personal attacks, look, we, they, we have emails for that. The emails, if you want to put, I'm telling you, as the commissioner, in talking about your First Amendment right, I have not stifled your First Amendment right when you choose to email me and let a flood of cursing go on. But when your cursing affects and infringes upon the rights of somebody else sitting here, trying to get something out of the meeting, that's where I have a problem. And I am sworn to protect everyone. And so when we talk about decorum, I want to know how we're going to enforce that. Are you going to have these people forcibly removed? Are you going to have them escorted out? We need to understand that component here if we're making policy.
If the commission or the mayor disqualifies someone speaking, we will ex, we will have them removed from the chambers by our officers.
Okay.
That's all it takes.
Okay. And a majority of the vote at that time to call point of order, correct?
That's correct.
And there needs to be a threshold, because sometimes people will calm down if you remind them twice, but three times, when you have to say point of order, or when an attack begins, I think that the commission all has to be on the same page also, recognizing 1A rights, but also reminding that sometimes in order to balance a ship that is off balance, you have to add extra ballast, and that's what we're trying to do here. It's not meant to be punitive, however, it has gotten out of hand, and I want to make sure that, that we talk about that. I mean, this is the only place we can talk about that.
I can assure you, if you feel uncomfortable, if the majority of you give that indication and I see it, I'm going to be sure to have an officer eject that person from this, this building.
And what is the mechanic by which that is triggered? Does the, if the mayor does not call for order, does, does a member of the commission call for point of order and then ask for it to be voted on at that moment? Or how would, what is the mechanism?
You don't have to vote on it.
Okay.
All you have to do is three of you or four of you voice that, that, that it's out of order.
Okay.
And that the individual have a chance to, to either participate and do it in a fashion that's in accordance with our regulations, or we will have them escorted out.
And I would like that in the, in the beginning, however we start doing, however we start expressing that, is to be put as succinctly as possible to the member that we, or the member of the audience that we set that expectation, right?
We have that on every form they fill out.
Okay.
It, it sets the decorum in what is prohibited.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear about that, because there are people listening right now, and there are people that will probably test the limits of this, and I just want to make sure that we are ready for that. So, thank you.
We're ready.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
And I'm going to add to that, because we do have people who I can tell you right now are already ready to pounce. In the 2022 case law, and I believe it was a Supreme case law, it was the sheriff's deputies who took action immediately and went and escorted the individual out. I don't even think the individuals had to call a point of order. The deputies felt that the, I believe the commissioner, he felt that they gave enough threat to the commissioner, that they didn't even have to call a point of order, and they immediately did it. If anybody goes to any other type of meeting, a state House meeting, you don't have what we've had in here. You can't even say S-H-I-T without being thrown out. I mean, you were recently up there. They clearly have a sign outside the door, and if you even seem like you're going to say it, you're out. You are out of that meeting, you know? And it is a civility. It is a respect. It's not just, you know, and I know that, well, respect is up here, respect, it is, it goes both ways. And not everybody is like that, but there's just a few that want to say, "Oh, no, we have Supreme case law and you can't do this." Well, now we have new Supreme case law that says that there is a decorum policy and it can be upheld. So if, if a commission, and I'll use the last meeting for instance, the individual refused to, to listen to point of order, had absolutely nothing to do with any portion of the meeting, I was trying to figure out, how many times do we have to point of order before it's going to happen? And I think that's what Commissioner McCool was talking about, you know? In that instance, it was nothing to do with the meeting, it was just a total personal attack, and we all called point of order, but yet he stood, stood there.
You're right.
So at what point is that sheriff jumping up going, "You were point of order, you're out." You know, you've got to stop.
If you, if you want us to remove them, if they violate that at the very first option, we will do it.
I mean, it's quite obvious when the individuals are, sorry.
It's obvious when the individuals are, are at it, you know? And there are certain individuals that are going to push us and is going to test us, and they've done it in here and they've done it outside.
Well, we know there's case law that support our policy, so there's no, there's no doubt in my mind that we can, in fact, implement the extraction of those people from this building.
Okay. I mean, we have a lot of people, and I just want to say this on the record, we do have a lot of individuals who come up here, they voice their opinions, they, they let us know they're not happy with us, they give us their, you know, cordial opinions. Sometimes they raise their voices, "I'm okay with that, I'm okay with a little frustration. What I'm not okay with is the, the personal attacks and going over the top." You know, and I want to say thank you to those that are respectful of everybody in here and at home.
So before, excuse me, before I go to Commissioner Jody Lee, right? I think while we're talking about decorum and civility and stuff like that, I mean, we're asking our residents, and, and look, I'm not trying to promote people coming up here and cursing and saying things like that, but we really need to adopt that up here as well, because you're right, I have gone to Tallahassee, and there is something that it says you can't say bad words. But can we really expect our residents to not stand on that podium and say, "F that" or "Screw that" in a different language, when we're seeing it from the dais? And I'm not seeing anybody, I'm not picking on anybody specifically. So I hope nobody gets upset with that. But if we're going to put a decorum into place, we all have to practice that decorum, not just our residents, we have to lead by example. That's all I'm going to say on that matter, Jody Lee, Commissioner Jody Lee?
Yep. Well, I cuss a lot. But I don't do it to the residents. I know the time and place, I joke with people, but when people get up here and cuss, and I, I know, like Commissioner Bradford just said, there's already people going to challenge that, because they got to, you know, they, some people have a Google Law degree, so they're going to, they're going to go after it. You know, you have, you have, when you've got a constitutional lawyer from, from, you know, Amazon, you know, they're, they're going to challenge this kind of stuff. So I'm just, they shouldn't get up there and cuss, and I think once they get called to order once and if they don't listen, I think that should be it, just out. I mean, if you walk into a courthouse and you tell the judge, you know, "You're white trash, you're a streetwalker," I, I'm sorry, if you say that to a judge, I don't imagine how long that's going to stand. So I think one time should be enough for me.
That will be welcome from this side, I can tell you. I've never been in a meeting where we had as much disruption by so few that was so repulsive. And it's not only repulsive to us, it's repulsive to the rest of the community. And it's, doesn't speak well of us to allow that to occur.
Mr. Chisholm, please continue.
Okay, I think I'm on E, or did I get past E? No, I'm down to I.
Real quick, there's a typo in G too, real quick.
In G? Okay.
Yeah, G, the mayor spelled backwards.
Okay. Members of the city commission shall not enter into discussion or response to individuals' comments during the public forum other than to give directions or to ask for clarification. J. A city commissioner shall not ask, shall not be asked to direct question except through the mayor. K. Persons addressing the city commission may present oral or written communication in regard to matters under consideration and with the permission of the mayor. However, any written communication shall be copied to each member of the commission, the mayor, the city attorney, the city manager, and the city clerk. All recognitions of, of any individual or group to be submitted to the, to the commission as a part of the agenda package must be delivered to the city clerk to allow sufficient time for copying and distribution to the city commission. All recognitions must be tied to an accomplishment which is representative of the city. Submissions are limited to maximum of 10 minutes. A written summary with appropriate background information must be included and are subject to approval of the city manager and/or the mayor, who may make additions and/or deletions at his or her discretion.
Mr. Chisholm, we have a comment or question from Commissioner McCool, and then from Commissioner Villavazquez.
Yeah.
Sorry, on that, Mr. Chisholm, if we could just put a time specific because, or on L, on L, must be delivered to city clerk to allow sufficient time, what is that sufficient time? Let's be succinct, because you want to set an expectation of timeliness for everyone.
I think that's, we do it two weeks before, I can't even remember how, how we did that.
Richard, do you know?
When are, when are the agenda items have to be submitted to the clerk?
I don't want to comment on the, I don't know the correct answer, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's, I can tell you this, it's not the, it's the, like, if this was our meeting, for the next meeting, we'd be working on agenda tomorrow, and so it can be no later than Thursday of this week. So it would be approximately two weeks, I think it's approximately two weeks ahead of time.
I just want that added, I'm sorry, I just want that added, so that, you know. Thank you.
I think that's under Section 3, Agenda E.
All right.
Commissioner Villavazquez, and then we can continue.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, it says, "Members of the city commission shall not enter into discussion or respond to individuals' comments during the public forum." However, I think it's under our understanding that we can answer a resident's questions or comments during our commission comments?
No, this is, I think this is the, isn't this the area where the public makes comments?
Right, but it said, oh, okay, not doing what the-
So we don't, we don't respond during that, that period.
All right, but we can answer their questions during our comments.
During your comments.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Reese.
Okay. Five. Procedures for public hearings for matters on the agenda. The mayor shall, A, the mayor shall introduce matters as established on the agenda by reading the title or proposed ordinance, resolution, agenda item, or other means. A motion to table or to continue may be made at that time. B. Staff may give a report as appropriate. C. Presentation of proponent slash applicant as appropriate. D. All other interested parties shall be allowed to give input into the announced subject. E. The public may be allowed to give input concerning the subject. F. Once the public participation is closed, the city commission will take action on the subject matter for approval, denial, tabling, the item indefinitely, or continuing to a cer, a certain date and time.
Can, yeah, I saw, I'm sorry. Can, can you just give clarification? Because I think this is where individuals get, this more for case attorney. The difference between table and the item indefinitely or continuing to a certain date time, or table and the item? Can you kind of go over the differences between the two so that they have that down?
Well, this kind of goes into Robert's Rules of Order, but, so you've got an item, you can either approve it, you can deny it, you can table it without a date certain, which is tabling indefinitely. You can then take it off the table under Robert's Rules of Order. Or you can continue, what we typically do is continue to a certain date and time, either because we can't get advertising done in time, or usually Ron will come up and say something. This usually applies to your quasi judicial hearings. So that's usually why we have a certain time and date. Is that, is that what you?
Well, yeah, tabling the, the item indefinitely, basically, that means we're taking it off until it is decided by staff to put it back on.
Yes.
And continuing to a certain date and time, when you continue to a certain date and time, do we have to repost?
If we continue to a certain date and time, like, at the hearing, then I don't think we have to, do we, Ron? No, we don't have to then.
Right, so I think that's why a lot of time, that's why I want clarification.
Okay.
Because it costs us less money if we continue to a certain date and time, because we're not having to go through all the postings again, whereas if we just table it, we don't know when we're going to bring it back up, and then we've got to go through-
Yes, and also you-
That's why I wanted you to discuss it around that.
Folks in the audience who may be for here, for that particular hearing, would then know when it was, you know, going to come back to, because, you know, they're there.
Yeah, I just wanted everybody to have clarification, because we have some new people up here.
Commissioner Burbank?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personal preference, number C, excuse me, presentation of proponent, applicant as appropriate. I, personal preference, think applicable would be a better word for that particular sentence.
Okay?
Please continue.
Section 3, Agenda. The city clerk and, or designated shall prepare the agenda for all meetings of the city commission in accordance with the city charter or as directed by the city manager. B. All reports, communications, ordinances, resolutions, contract documents, or other materials to be- materials to be submitted to, submitted to the City Commission as part of the agenda packet must be delivered to the city clerk by 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 11, 11 days prior to the regular meeting. Exceptions to this timeframe may apply if circumstances warrant. There's the timeframe we were talking about earlier, 11 days prior. C, it shall be the option of the city clerk or the city manager to remove any items from the agenda if information is not furnished to the city clerk as stated in B above. The, all materials or, for special or other workshop meetings must be submitted to the city clerk to allow sufficient time for copying, distribution, and City Commission. Special and workshop meetings, excuse me. Special workshop meetings, agenda packets shall be prepared and distributed whenever practical, at least three days prior to the subject meeting. Excuse me, I've still got a cold coming back, I think. E, as a city clerk will arrange, shall arrange the agenda, subject to approval, city manager who may make additions or deletions at his or her discretion, notwithstanding the agenda shall be completed by 12:00 noon Wednesday preceding the regular commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I beg your pardon, Mr. Chisholm, clearly you're struggling. Would it be okay, Mr. Mayor, if our city attorney give him a chance to catch his breath and speak for, instead for a moment or two?
Sure, Mr. Chisholm, are you okay with that?
I might if you want me to, Jim.
Go for it, let me get-
All right. F, the city clerk or designated will post the regular commission meeting agenda and all associated backup material to the city's webpage, no later than 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday preceding the regular city commission meeting. Special and workshop agendas shall be prepared and posted as soon as possible and within guidelines established in the charter and by state statute. G, legislative actions shall be taken only at the regular city commission meeting or at a special meeting called for the purpose of specific legislation. H, no action shall be taken on matters not on the agenda, including during citizen comments or commission comments. However, if necessary, an item may be added to the present agenda upon the proper motion, second and majority vote, provided the commission finds that no additional information or public notice is required to consider the items at that time. An item may be added to a future agenda upon a proper motion, second and majority vote. Such a motion shall be in order only during the commission's special report and request portion of the agenda. I, the report of the city managers should list by item all legislative actions or discussions of legislative action being requested by the administration. Such items may be added to the agenda pursuant to paragraph H. J, the report from the city attorney may be added to the agenda when necessary to inform the City Commission the status of legislative and other directed issues. K, the public forum part of the meeting shall be prior to the consent agenda. L, any group or organization other than staff wishing to make a presentation to the City Commission must submit, must submit their request to the city manager obtaining commission approval to have the item placed on the next available city agenda. M, any member of the City Commission who wishes to make a presentation to the City Commission must receive permission from the City Commission at a previous meeting. N, at the City Commission comments portion of the meeting, any member of the City Commission may address the record to make a statement regarding public comments or any other issue.
Thank you, Marshall. We have Vice Mayor Bradford has some questions.
Okay.
Actually, I have a statement.
Okay.
Do not email me with items you want to put on the agenda, comments you want to put on the agenda, ideas you want to put on the agenda, or items you've talked about. So since we're addressing this now, I want to make it public, please do not email me or any other commissioner of items you want to put on the agenda. And it is a sunshine violation.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to start again?
Yeah, I'll try a little bit. We're at A-
Section four.
Section four?
Yeah.
The mayor shall be the presiding officer of the City Commission meetings and sign or execute documents and be recognized as a ceremonial head of the city, city government. The mayor shall have no administrative duties other than those necessary to accomplish these actions, or other such actions as may be authorized by the City Commission, consent with general or special law. The vice mayor shall be elected annually at the first regular City Commission meeting after the general election. In the absence of the mayor, the vice mayor shall be acting mayor, and in the case of the mayor and vice mayor are both absent, then the remaining City Commission shall select the City Commissioner to serve as the acting mayor. B, the mayor shall preserve strict order and decorum in all meetings of the City Commission. He or she shall state every question coming before the City Commission, announce the decision of the City Commission on all subjects, and decide all questions of order subject, however, to an appeal to the City Commission upon such questions in which event the majority vote of the City Commission shall exclusively govern and determine such question of order. The mayor shall vote on all questions, his or her name being called last.
Thank you, Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Yes, I have a question. In the absence of both mayor and vice mayor, that the commissioners shall make a decision. I mean, automatically, there is somebody who was vice mayor prior to the vice mayor, so wouldn't that person be automatically take over the meeting? So they have to vote, the commissioners have to vote at that moment for somebody to run the meeting?
That's a discretion of the Commission.
You know what I'm saying? So you have the mayor, then you have the vice mayor, and prior to that vice mayor, there was another vice mayor. So won't he go back into that order? Just, instead of having a vote? I'm just, just curious.
You know, I don't know why this wording was selected, but I mean, this, these are your policies, so at some point, the Commission came up with this kind of language. If any of you want to change it to something else, you can.
No, I'm just curious.
No, there's nothing that basically, because then you would have, you may have new people who doesn't, who don't, you know, don't remember who should be next in position, or it just requires you to have more information if you're, I mean, you've already got two members gone, so with the remainder, you don't know, you know, like, who those individuals are, or what they know about what happened with the board in the past, so.
Okay.
But it's if you all want to do it, you can.
Could, could we do something more along the lines of the more seasoned commissioner that's here, for example, right? That, that could also help, so the newer ones won't be put in a difficult situation either, because I don't think, if I was a new commissioner, right, and I didn't know how to do it, I wouldn't want to be voted in as the acting mayor at the time.
Well, I guess you could decline, but beyond that, the problem is, when you start using words like "season," what does that mean?
Yeah, I get it, okay.
You know, so then we have to define things.
It's pretty normal to, first of all, be very unusual that both would be gone. So it's pretty normal for a commission to make that decision.
Please continue. If you, if you two want to take turns, city manager Chisholm and city attorney Marshall, that would be good too. It's up to you.
Let me see how far I can go here. I love doing this. Section 5, Quorum. The City Charter provides that the majority of the City Commission shall constitute a quorum. A commissioner may join a meeting for good cause shown such as an illness of the city commissioner, of the commissioner and their family in an emergency situation. The commissioner participating by Zoom or a similar platform may not be used to constitute a quorum. No action of the City Commission shall be valid unless adopted by an affirmative vote of the majority of the commissioners in attendance unless otherwise provided by law and stated herein. However, the commissioner attending by Zoom may participate and vote as long as the commissioner is not necessarily for the quorum. In cases where the commissioner leaves a meeting early, once there is no longer a majority present, the meeting is to end and no further action taken. Call to order, Section 6.
Excuse me, Mr. Chisholm, just one minute. Vice Mayor Bradford?
Okay, so this was, this was the question before.
Mm-hmm.
If we go back to this. May join a meeting for good cause shown as illness of the commissioner or their family or an emergency situation. So I think this is what Commissioner Vila Vasquez was talking about, where we were being questioned on what is an emergency, what is the definition of an emergency? So I don't know if, if we need to do that, or we just leave it as is.
I would leave it the way it is. I think it's, it's reasonable minds can make that determination, I don't think.
Well, that's what we thought when we made it, but there was just a question brought up by a lot of people saying, what's an emergency? You know, everybody's definition is a little different, so.
Yeah. I mean, taking a vacation, probably not an emergency, but if you got, it is for some people, though.
To Vice Mayor's point, I think maybe we should just redefine it a little bit, tune it in a little bit more, just so there is no doubts, right?
Okay.
How do, I'm sorry, I couldn't reach my button, how do you do that?
That's the question too, I mean.
Yeah, how do, how do you constitute an emergency? Again, I, my button, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Sure, okay.
It's a workshop.
It's subjective. Emergency is subjective, you know what I mean? It is, for each individual, depending on whatever. I think that you take the pledge not to abuse, right? You have to answer to your constituency out here, right? And be transparent, but you can't, you can't, you can't quantify that, it's too subjective, an emergency.
I mean, an emergency to you may be one thing, to somebody else may be something else.
Exactly.
And that's, and I think that's normal.
So what I would say is, trust me, I'm from the government, I will tell you if it's an emergency.
Oh, boy. Commissioner Burbank, and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this whole document is full of subjective terms. If we, you know, I tell you, what is disorderly? Well, ask Mr. Jody Lee, he'll tell you. His, his version of disorder is probably a lot different than, than the mayor's there. I think what he said is, sums it up, is, it's something no reasonable person could see otherwise, and I don't think, see any of us as being unreasonable, and I think we could all argue the point if we come up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, you know, the Charter states that you have to be present at all meetings. That's what the Charter states, correct? This whole Zoom thing came from COVID. And I think that what people were saying was, you can't be abusing Zoom just because, oh, well, you know, I'm going shopping, so I'll Zoom the meeting while I'm shopping, or, you know, who knows what an emergency is? You know, we don't know what people's emergency is. But I think the residents questioned the fact that, you know, they don't want any commissioner or mayors or elected officials to abuse the use of Zoom, because the Charter states you must be present at the meetings. And Zoom, again, only came up during COVID.
Thank you, Commissioner Merkle, and then we'll continue.
Thank you. If Legal could answer that also, that the resolution, the resolution lives outside the Charter and is an exception to the Charter, correct? When we made the resolution to be able to attend, I just want to make sure that we are within the legal boundaries, the Charter does say something. And I think that if we go back also, electronic communication, whether it be online or whether it be telephone, was not written in until at a later time, because there were two commissioners fighting with one another, and one didn't want one to vote on another, so they said, "No, you can't call in." This was one that was pregnant and was calling in from home, and they said, "Oh, no, you can't do that." So that's what the caveat was for that first resolution listed here. Second resolution was brought up in the advent of COVID, right at COVID. So just making sure that legally we are covered in respect that this, the resolution takes care of what the Charter said, not that it supersedes, but that it's in addition to the Charter for exceptional circumstances, correct, Legal?
Yes. And of course, there's also a difference here between when we were talking about an emergency meeting and, and the emergency, you know, with regards to being able to use electronic medium. There are definitions out there on emergency meetings, so I did some research, I looked at emergencies, and I was looking at, and some of the, the specific language that as we go back and start giving you a rewrite on that, you can, we can limit an issue or topic to something that has to be resolved before the next scheduled meeting, you know, so we can use that in an emergency, or we can also use it in a special. So there's, I looked at a lot of what other, you know, municipalities used, and, and some of them say nothing, and some use some qualifying language. So from what I'm hearing from all of you, I think we'll come forward with a draft back to you with some qualifying language.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm, please continue.
Okay, Section 6, Call to Order. The mayor, as described in Section 4, shall take the chair precisely at the hour appointed for the meeting and shall immediately call the commission meeting to order. In the absence of the mayor and vice mayor, as described in Section 4, city clerk shall call the commission to order, whereupon the temporary chair shall be selected by members of the City Commission present. Upon the arrival of the mayor, the temporary chairman shall immediately relinquish the chair upon the conclusion of the current business. Section 7, Roll Call. Before proceeding with business of this commission, the city clerk shall call the roll of the members and names of those present and those absent, and shall be entered into the minutes. Section 8, Minutes Approval. Each member of the City Commission shall be furnished in advance a copy of the minutes, and unless there are any changes requested, the minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. If corrections are made to the minutes, they can be approved as amended by unanimous consent. If the objection is raised and approved, of the minutes will be by formal motion. Rules of Debate. The mayor shall introduce matters to establish on the agenda by reading the title of the proposed ordinance, resolution, agenda item, or other means. Motion to table at a time certain or to continue to a future date. B, action on items before the City Commission shall be commenced by oral motion of the city, of the commission member. Upon said motion, receiving a second by the commission member other than he or she who made the original motion, his item should then be open for discussion. At the conclusion of the discussion, action on the motion shall be concluded by the use of the electronic voting system or voice vote as required. Commission members making the motion in second, it shall be required to vote in favor of the said motion. C, obtaining the floor. Every commission desiring to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the mayor, shall confine himself to the question under debate, avoiding all personalities in, in de seriousis, language, whatever that is, decourteous. Except for the workshop, shall, each commissioner can only speak twice on a motion. D, interruptions. A commissioner wants to recognize, shall not be interrupted when speaking unless to call him or her to order and herein otherwise provide. If a member while speaking were called to order, he or she shall cease speaking until the question of order is determined, and if an order, shall be permitted to proceed. E, withdrawal of a motion. Any motion before the commission may be withdrawn at any time prior to the voting being taken, whereupon, therupon, by the commission member making the motion, upon agreement by the commission member seconding the motion. F, amendments of motions at the, at any time during discussion of the motion on the floor or motion to amend, said motion may be made. If amending the motion is seconded, the commission shall, at the conclusion of discussion, first vote on the amending motion, then upon the original motion as amended. Upon amending, motion may be withdrawn in the same manner as set forth in E above. Closing the debate, the mayor shall request the motion to be repeated by the city clerk prior to calling of the question, and that such, that debate is closed.
Thank you, Commissioner Jody Lee.
Talking about the voting and motions, is there, where did it come in that if we're going to vote on something, we have to give our reasons why, for, against? I mean, is there a-
That's in the-
Yeah, that's in the quasi judicial.
Quasi judicial.
So that's required by law, that you have to give a reason why?
And it's to protect the city in case you all make a decision, and- And it's to protect the city in case you all make a decision, and, and say you decide against an applicant, and applicant wants to file suit against the city. We have all of you on record then of what, how you voted pursuant to the comp plan and the reasons for it.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Chisholm.
Section 10, motions and voting. All actions of the city commission shall be by motion, ordinance, or resolution, shorter section 58B. B, every motion shall be clearly stated, including direction, to whom it is given, specific dates or, or timeframe by which the action is to be taken, and any stipulation or condition which may be applicable. C, if, for withdrawal of a motion and amending motions, refer to section 9. D, for proper procedure on various motions, refer to Robert's Rules of Order. All motions, E, is all motions shall be made in affirmative and shall not include opinions, observations, or personal views on the subject. F, in the event there is a second to the motion, it dies for lack of a second. G, abstaining from voting. No member of the city commission shall abstain from voting except as provided in the Florida statutes, chapter 112, 3143. If the issue would endure to the person's private gain, accordingly, he or she must publicly state the nature of his or her interest in the issue at the time the item is to be considered, and within 15 days of the abstination, abstention, he or she must file a memorandum of voting conflict with the city clerk. The proper form is available to city clerk's office. Memorandums will be attached to the minutes of the meeting made and made apart thereof. Section 11, ordinances and resolutions. The provision of city charters for Florida statutes shall govern the appropriate preparation, preparation, and passage or, or adoption of all ordinances. Two, the title of each ordinance must be read for passage and adoption by the city attorney prior to the vote. Three, the city commission or city manager may request that the city attorney prepare an ordinance to be considered at a future meeting. All requests except from the city commission shall be directed through the office of the city manager. Four, the form of each ordinance shall be approved by the city attorney unless otherwise directed by the city commission. B, resolutions. An item in section 11A above shall be applicable to resolutions. Two, resolutions may include approval of the contract or agreement authorizing its execution, appointments to boards, city commissions, committees, and such other matters which may be determined by the city commission or the city manager. Section 12, source of rules of order, the Robert's Rules of Order, as arise, shall be the source to serve as the guidelines for the city commission rules of order in lieu of any direction as stipulation in the current city commission rules of procedure. Section 13, effective date and operating guideline, rules and procedures. I don't think I need to read all of that. Do you? Okay.
But thank you for reading it all. I'm glad you got to read tonight. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move on to discussions of potential acquisition of Deltona Women's Club property by the city of Deltona.
Mayor, we do have two public comments on this item.
Please call them forward.
Okay. Del Terrace 007, then Kathy Bryant. Del Terrace 007, please.
All right. Two minutes is not a lot of time. So, where do I start? Okay. First question that pops up on here. What is the difference between our contracted employees and our charter officers? You might want to take a pen because I got to talk fast. There was this issue and confusion before with an interim city manager. Are they contracted or are they charter officers? And how are we going to determine which applies? Second, if there's something in their contract that supersedes or is in conflict of the rules, which one is, which one are we going by? Which one supersedes? After that, all right. So define loud, okay? I, I, I want to be very clear on what this commission is requesting from us. So be clear, is it to your definitions or you're going to find yourself in a suit for section 1983? Because you're going to treat one person, even inadvertently, different than another, and that's all they need, right there. So be very clear, because this, to me, isn't even me really speaking loud, but it's very small and quiet in comparison to Albert Bryant. He naturally talks loud. That's how he talks. Are you going to call him out of every order, every time he speaks because he's considered loud? Come up with a definition. Same thing, effusive, offensive and abusive. Let's touch on that. By the words of this, I just have to hurt your feelings. Now, some of you are a little, so I need to know, is that going to be a problem? What is considered offensive and abusive? Be very specific because it's going to be important later on so that you're not being biased and discriminatory. Last versus, I'm sure you're talking about Moms versus Liberty of Brevard County, and I think you need to see that all the way through to the end because it's not quite done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Bryant, please.
Good evening, Kathy Bryant, Deltona. I want to reiterate the fact that it does say after a motion, you can only speak two times on issues. I know sometimes that was upheld, sometimes it was not. I know we don't like long meetings, but sometimes the commission has a tendency to go on and on about the same thing over and over and over again. I'll be interested to see how evaluations, how you're going to go proceed with that. The document says, one law enforcement officer when we're having a meeting, we've seen five tonight, that's a lot of money. That's a four to one ratio for tonight. When it comes to not having conversations on your phone and electronic devices up there, I hear a lot of whispering going, that shouldn't be allowed either, that's a violation of the sunshine law. I can't hear it when I'm here, but when I'm at home and people are whispering, and it's not just to say, oh, this page here, because I can pick it up and it's, it's inappropriate, The time permitted in workshop, speaking, when you've got, when you've got something, for instance, like your, your women's group here, or when you have a special group coming in, give them a little consideration when it comes to talking, and, and maybe a little more time or more of a town hall forum. I think that's something you guys could consider. In a state of emergency issue, when it comes to the electronic stuff, I think you should strike out two, not three. Two says you may attend. Three says, vote, you can vote electronically or telephonically. That's in a state of emergency. I've got to go back and read the thing to see, you know, if it's a state of emergency called by the state or federal government and stuff like that, where none of you can get here because of that state.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This ends public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to see agenda item 4B, which is discussion of potential acquisition of the Deltona Women's Club property by the city of Deltona.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Some years back, I gave a talk at the Deltona Women's Club, and after we spoke, we ate, and we were talking about the membership of the Deltona Women's Club is down dramatically. Like many social organizations, the Lions Club, can you hear me okay? The Lions Club says it's on. The Lions Club and other social, the, the, many of our social clubs that were in existence for our Father's Days are dwindling in membership because people today aren't interested, and these people are getting older and are dying off. So the question came around, well, if the Women's Club is no longer in this building, what's going to happen to the building? Personally, I'd like to see it come into the public trust if we could, if it could be acquired. It's, there's a lot of good reason to have it there. It's, it's in a good location for that district. We have no facilities in that area. Most importantly to me, it's walkable, and there's a lot of history in that building. It's a pretty decent condition considering its age. I just understand, though, that some of the members are interested in selling the building because they are allowed to do so by the contract that they signed with the Deltona Corporation back in 1970. So I just think that's something that we should consider pursuing if we're all that interested. I personally am, very much so. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Bradford and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Is the Women's Club wanting to sell?
I beg your pardon?
Is the Women's Club wanting to sell? Like, how is this even coming up to us?
It was decided that it is inevitable.
It was incited it was inhabitable?
Inevitable. They're nying off.
Who decided that?
Well, it was, this is just out there. It's, it's not imminent. This is not someone going to decide tomorrow, but it is coming eventually. It will, somebody will buy it. They were approached by a prospective buyer.
So we have the Women's Club here, and I don't know, are they able to speak on this item? I mean, are we able to communicate and ask them? Are they even, have we approached them? I mean, this is.
This has just been me so far, ma'am. That's why I wanted to bring it up, so I could bring it to everybody's attention, so that these things can't happen, the approaching, the discussions, to see if they have any plans for that building, and if so, what those plans might be. But I do know that they were made an offer to buy it.
That doesn't mean they're wanting to sell. So Mayor, city manager, how, can we hear from them? Are they even wanting to sell? Like, I don't even know why this is on the agenda if you, the city manager hasn't even spoken to them or talked to them, and, and I'm saying this because I was asked by this group, why the heck are they on an agenda for their building to be bought or taken over, and what the heck is the city doing? So generally, when we have something like this, and I understand it's, you know, you're new to that, generally what we would do is, under our special comments events, we would say, hey, city manager, you know, can we find the status of the Women's Club, the building? Are they interested in selling? Are they not interested in selling? Instead of going through and making it on here, I mean, at this point, I'm being told there's no way in.
You can say it.
In Candyland, that they're interested in selling it, giving it anything.
You're saying I'm premature.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So can we hear from them? I don't know if that's possible since they're not on here, or, yeah, there's two, four, six, eight, 10, there's five of them.
Mr. Chisholm, is we allowed to hear from the ladies of the Women's Club?
I think it'd be, they're here, we've got it on the agenda, I think it'd be appropriate for them to share if they're interested in talking to us or not. I don't think we have to make a decision.
Should we wait for public comment on this specific item?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Vice Mayor? Okay, Commissioner Jody Lee?
Hey, do y'all want to sell it?
At market price.
I was just asking.
But we, we don't.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to you as soon as we get to the public comments on this item.
Go ahead. I'm good.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? No? Okay. So I, I do have a minor concern, right? Because I had a couple of residents kind of suggest if we're kind of getting into real estate, so, or if we're going to start bailing out different companies or different organizations. I did hear that they did have somebody that is looking to buy the property as well. So I think we, we need to let the free market take care of what they have to. I mean, if we're talking about the former community center, it's a little different. I think that's something that the city has taken care of, the city has run. I believe at one point, the Women's Club had a mortgage or something, so it just takes it away from the, the hands of, of the city of Deltona. I don't think we need to start getting involved in that matter, but nobody else has any other questions or comments? I would love to start going into public comments, and if you can please, oh, Commissioner Villavasquez, please, go ahead.
So I know that, speaking from experience, Deltona, oh my Lord, here I go again. So Deltona, the organization over by Lake Shore Drive, they used to own the community center. Civic Association, Deltona Civic Association, they owned the community center, they owned the whole property there, the three buildings, little red schoolhouse, whatever. Just before I became a member of it, which was the early 2000s, a couple of years before that, it's my understanding they could not keep up with it, and it was turned over to the city of Deltona, and that's why we own it now. And there were conditions made by the Deltona Civic Association that the city agreed on. So I don't know if this is the same situation. I don't know if we had a mortgage at the community center, but they, it needed a lot of repairs. I know that for a fact. I used to be part of that organization. And I don't know, this, this two property was given to the Deltona Civic Association by the Mackel Brothers, and that's why the city is now the owner of it. So I don't know if what, again, I don't know if this is what the Deltona Women's Club is looking for, as Commissioner Burbank said, but this was one way of keeping such a beautiful property within the city, and, you know, letting the residents have use of it. So I'm just putting that information out there since you mentioned the community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Villavasquez. Commissioner Jody Lee?
There's a few things, I mean, like, Mr. Maritza was just saying, there's things with the building, there's roofing issues, there's a lot of rehab issues, there's, I don't know if there's code enforcement issues that are all outstanding, if there's a lot of code enforcement outstanding issues, I mean, even if we acquire a building, you can't just say, hey, to the code enforcement, because that's such a bad standard to everybody else in the city, that we can just acquire something and waive code enforcement infractions that were pending prior. But I would like to have more questions after we hear from the Women's Club that, and hear their opinion. I know, I, I know of a person that has been trying to purchase this and this particular building, so I just want to save more comments for after we hear from them.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Bradford's on the board.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
I, I have a question, and I don't know if it's possible. Is there grant funds available to assist them? I do know that there is some stuff that needs to be worked on in the building. We have grant money available. Is there any way for them to apply for grant funds? Because, you know, I can, I can recall a few years back, this absolutely wonderful book fair, I don't know what you would call it, that you guys put on, we took the grandkids there, spent the whole day, books were given, it was amazing. That's the kind of events that our community needs. That, it was, it was awesome. That was one of my favorite events. And those are the kind of things we want to continue to happen in the city. So our goal is not to take a building away from a group that wants to give to the community, but to help that group to give more to the community. You know, still their memberships down. Everybody moved memberships down during COVID. So I guess my question is, is there any grant funds that could, they could apply for that could maybe assist them with getting, you know, when you look at it, I mean, first thing I see is the soffits damaged, roof isn't in that better shape, but is there anything available to assist them?
We'd have to check, Commissioner, and see what, what's out there. Is it quite possible? The age of the building might, and the, and the fact that it was part of the history of this city, it might have some, you know, there might be some options here. But what I'd suggest, instead of us trying to decide that today and, and do that, why don't I meet with them and get a better feel for what they would like to see and what they might want to do? And that may get us to a point of really being able to, you know, decide what, what should be in our best interest and their interest. And I think there, there are many options, and I can share that with them. I've had opportunity to, to be involved in some, some of the same kind of situations where we had community groups that had buildings, but didn't have the money to maintain them and keep them up, and, and in the case, the city I was operating in that time, we found the money to, to make the modifications necessary for it to be continued to use for their purpose, and it was also available to the city for other purposes. So, you know, there may be, there may be some middle ground there that might make some sense, and, and I don't think we need to kind of make that decision tonight. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to meet with them and, and see what I can find out.
100%. That's, that's what we should be, is having you sit down with them and figure out what we can do. But I just want to throw out there to see if there's any grants that we can help them out with.
Okay.
Thank you. City Clerk, please.
Mayor, there are three public comments. Del Terrace 007, Pat Justin, and Eldine McKenzie, Marchbank. Del Terrace 007.
Del Terrace 007, please.
This is off. Couple of questions. There was a code case open May 6 of 2022, and there was supposed to be a scheduled inspection September 30 of '22, because if I'm not mistaken, in July, the engineer asked for some extended time to bring the building back up to code. And to my knowledge, none of that has happened. So I'm just curious where we are with that code case, because, you know, we have residents who live near there who have brought this forward before. This isn't the first year they've brought forward their concerns regarding the condition of the building, and it seems like when it's a resident parking on the grass, boom, you're on it, and within three days, you're back to check. But something like this has been going on almost a year now, if not more, because there's other records available. And so I'm just curious where we're at with that. Secondly, regarding the purchase of the property, something to think, there are some comments online talking about how they need that parking lot area, mostly for the school right there. So that's something also to kind of think of if we're talking about helping to fix a building with taxpayer dollars and not a grant, then, you know, we have a lot of nonprofits that do a lot for the city that are in needs of things. So maybe there could be, like you mentioned, some offset of some mutual space use or something. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Justin, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, and other city servants. I'm Pat Justin. I'm president right now of the Deltona Women's Club. I'm here with two past presidents with me tonight. We really appreciate the city wanting to help us. It's only the soffit that's wrong with the building, it's not the roof. So it's a, more of a cosmetic thing, but it's going to be expensive, and we have now, we're now underway with making those repairs. Our membership would prefer to be able to continue in their clubhouse in order to take care of our charitable things for the community. And I'll let Eldine take over from here.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Com- Commissioners. I'm Eldine Marchbank. I live at 2445 Beck Circle. I'm in District 6. Been here nearly 30 years in Deltona. The Deltona Women's Club has existed in Deltona before Deltona became a city. Those ladies helped the Mackel brothers do the welcome wagons, and because of that, the Mackel brothers donated that strip of land to them. They founded in their way to place a building on that property. We're affiliated with the General Federation of Women's Club, that is a national and international organization that deals with the education and improvement of women and children. This is not the first time we're here in this hall. We've been here before, about 10 years before this date, to ask the city to help us, and no help came. So we went out, and we had a former member who dipped, who dug deep into their pockets and helped us. We're, we're unpaid volunteer members in that organization. Our soffit, over the two years of COVID, what funds we had for maintenance was put out to keep the building going, keep electricity on, pay the water bill, because if we shut that down, then we have no building. You have to keep the air circulating. We, we make most of our funds by renting the facility at a reasonable rate to the Deltona community. Lots of you have been there for functions. The soffit has fallen apart.
Ma'am, one quick minute. Can we extend her time two minutes? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Please extend her time two minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The soffit has fallen apart, and in June, your co-director, Mr. Garcia, spoke with me. I was exiting the building, he was there, we talked about what had to be done. We got the board together, we got organized to see what can be done. He came back in August, and we talked about it. We got a general contractor involved who has gotten, spoke to your city, and has gotten the drawings about what the rendition would look like. At this process, the members are dead set about handing this, the property over to anyone. I laugh, but it's not, it's not a laughing matter. And we have now gotten someone who is interested in helping us fix the piece up, bring it back to code, so that we could continue the process. We're getting older, in case you notice. If our membership does not grow within the next five to 10 years, we may be at the place to sell the property. What we then have to do, it was given by Mackel, we have the deed, there is nothing attached to it, we own it outright. There is no mortgage. All we do is for the upkeep and support of the charities within this, this city. We have adopted the school behind us for the last 12 years, and we help support them with uniforms, books, and everything else. We do things silently because we're women, nobody knows about it, but I'm here to ring that bell tonight, and we would look forward for you to helping us in any which way you can, and be, let us go forward in Deltona.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, this ends public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to get public comments. There's no other public comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, perfect. City Manager?
Nothing.
Nothing? Can I bring up something really quick, just out of curiosity? So we have FEMA that has installed themselves at, at the center, and they're coming with those temporary housing?
FEMA, the SBA is there, and the mitigation group is there. We have a complete contingent of everything associated with damages that were attributed to the two storms that hit Deltona. We have people there that can service the community, they can answer questions about FEMA, can answer questions about the status of applications if they have put applications in. They can answer anyone's questions about the assistance that is available, including housing, housing as well as temporary housing, in some cases, food, just depends on the applicant and, and all those things. But there's a whole group of things that can happen there.
All right. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.
Real quick, can I? With the FEMA individuals, there, I've had a lot of people tell me that they were declined for FEMA prior to the emergency order, and knew, if those individuals go and reapply now, I would highly recommend it. I've had several individuals that we've recommended to go reapply, and they have reapplied and actually been accepted. So even if you were prior declined, I encourage you to go to the center, sit and meet with them, and take your existing paperwork and reapply.
That's, that is an excellent point, because I had a discussion with the FEMA reps, and no matter what the status of your application became, it was, if they declined it, there may be other ways of funding it there, but at the same time, it may get approved, and, and you got to continue to, to follow through the process. And it's very important that they, if you have a need for assistance from the federal government, from, from those agencies, they are here in Deltona, and they're here to service this community, and they're going to be here beginning nine o'clock tomorrow morning through six o'clock all the rest of this week, nine to six, the rest of this week, and probably the week after. But at this point, we need the public to be aware of it and to take advantage of the information and the expertise that's in our community.
Thank you, Jody Lee, and then we're going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, real quick, I promise, two things. One, we spend a lot of money in this city for neutering cats. I think we can find some money to help different clubs in our city. I mean, to help people. I mean, I'm sorry to say it. If we can spend $60,000, $70,000 a year for cats, we could find some money somewhere. I'm sorry. We should, we should all work on that. The second one, Mr. Mayor, I'm not picking on you, but you just met with Senator Scott. Next time someone highlight that, can you please let us all know whether we want to meet him or not? If we all would have went there as a, as a consensus, it would have looked better as all of us together? Not that all of us want to meet him. It's like the governor. You went to meet the governor, and you said, I don't know if I'm coming back to, I want to come back for our meeting, but you got asked to stay. But you had told city staff that you weren't going to be here for the meeting, and you brought a tux and an evening gown, so you knew you weren't going to be here.
So, so...
So I'm just...
Two things.
Just ask, because I, we know, we know you brought friends with you, but there's people that are elected. We would like to show a united front to do these things together.
With Senator Scott, you get a certain amount of time, with any elected official of that magnitude, you get a certain amount of leeway. Now, city man, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, would that have instituted a sunshine violation if we did not put out a notice that we were going to all get together and meet Senator Scott?
Not really. What, you want, do you want to talk to him?
There could be, because of the nature of that visit, and the second part of that, the notice that we got weren't, wasn't sufficient for us to even get that information out, because basically, we didn't realize he was going to be here until the morning that he actually showed up. So it's very difficult to, to make plans, given that, but I can tell you this, it was, it was a really significant fact that he came to Deltona.
I agree.
It was significant that he has mobilized the federal government to bring their agencies and their funds into this community to help Deltona and all its residents. So given all the circumstances about it, many times, if we're fortunate, fortunate enough to get the right people here, we can make headway and make improvements for our community, and that's, that's the real benefit of all that. And it would have been nice if we could have done a lot more for him, but quite honestly, with his schedule, we were lucky that he came when he came and stayed as long as he did.
I take that back. I apologize. It was his fault, not yours.
It's my fault.
Meeting adjourns.